Okay, well, call the meeting to order take roll call.
Mr. Hildinger?
Here.
Mr. Cunningham?
Here.
Mr. Sneed?
Here.
Mr. Elliott? Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Ballard?
Here.
Okay, we have six. Meeting summaries, meeting minutes from the executive meeting in November twenty-two. We need a motion on that. Discussion. Seeing none, all goes in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it six zero. Data sheet will be next month. No committee reports. So the first item is from new business PC twenty-eight dash twenty-one. Jemma West Properties.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Abby Freudel and this is PC twenty-eight twenty-one Jemma West Properties LLC. A request for a change in zoning from M three FPM three NU and FPNU to C eight and FPC eight on a six point one nine acre tract of land on the south side of Manchester Road, approximately two hundred and sixty feet west of Dietrich Road. As you recall, this site is in West County and there you can see it outlined in red on the aerial. Here is a second aerial where you can see more of the commercial development along this portion of Manchester Road. Here's the site, here's the preliminary site development plan presented at public hearing. It shows a new sixty-three hundred square foot building with a car wash and a two bay interior drop off center attached. The plan shows landscaping along Manchester Road. There are a hundred and eleven spaces proposed for parking, loading and vehicle inventory storage. And I will remind you that on this site plan, north is actually at the bottom of the screen instead of at the top. The department finds that the existing development at the site suffers from a lack of landscaping and abundance of curb cuts onto Manchester Road. Therefore, we're recommending the petitioner add landscaping islands to the ends of the parking rows as approved on the site development plan. We're also recommending adding a fifty foot undisturbed natural vegetative buffer from both banks of the creek and a twenty-five foot building setback beyond the stream buffer. Lastly, the department recommends the petitioner close the east and west curb cuts and reduce the width of the center entrance as directed by MoDOT. The department recommends approval of this request. We find that commercial zoning is reasonable and in keeping with the surrounding land use and development pattern. The C eight commercial district procedure allows for a site specific conditions of development to protect surrounding permitted land uses. Additionally, the use has long been established at this site. Thus, the department recommends approval given the following conditions. The eastern and western curb cuts shall be closed to better control ingress and egress. A fifty foot undisturbed natural vegetative buffer shall be established surrounding the Grand Glaze Creek with an additional twenty-five foot structure setback. All gravel shall be removed from the site and no storage of no storage of vehicles not associated with the dealer shall be allowed. And then in addition to all other conditions in attachment C.
Okay, thank you. We need a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it, Bill.
Discussion. Seeing none, all goes in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it six zero. And next we have PC twenty-nine dash twenty-one K two M Properties LLC.
Good evening, commissioners. I have before you PC twenty-nine dash twenty-one K two M Properties LLC. As you recall, this was a request for a change in zoning for M three and FPM three two C eight and FPC eight for a track, three point six three acre track located on the northeast corner of the intersection of Manchester Road and Consort Drive. You can see from the county context map, this is in West County and the aerial, the parcel is located in, is outlined in red. Additionally, this parcel is directly north across Manchester Road from the previous petition. You can see from this larger aerial, more of the surrounding content, land use and development context of the site. The parcel itself is developed with a mixed tenant office building within the Regency Park Business Industrial Park Development. The preliminary site development plan the petitioner presented and submitted with their application shows two access points to the site that are existing off of Consort Drive. They're also proposing to occupy a single tenant space which is circled in blue, that section of the building. And they're proposing their car inventory be located along the Manchester Road frontage. So we are recommending denial for this petition. The proposed use is inappropriate for this site is and is incompatible with the existing land uses on the site and the surrounding development pattern. While car sales do exist in the surrounding area, all of such car sale uses are located on the south side of Manchester rather than the north side where this parcel is. And additionally, each parcel where car sales is permitted, that car sales is the sole use on that site. Additionally, the preliminary site development plan is problematic. It would lead to the site essentially functioning as a car inventory lot based off of the petitioner's presentation at the public hearing where customers could come and look at cars, could test drive cars, but any sales or paperwork processing would take place offsite and would no, the site would no longer function as a mixed tenant office building. Additionally, would lead to the visual identification of the site as a car dealership, which would be detrimental to the existing uses onsite and their customers. So at this time, I would ask for a motion for denial.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Uh. Discussion, anyone?
Yeah, I just have a question. This is Bill, Bill Steed. From the diagram there, I could not relate to where at on Manchester, this, this is located. I'm not familiar with Concert Drive.
So this, this parcel is directly north from the previous petition, just on the other side of Manchester Road. So Consort Drive is, if you can see my mouse, is this road sort of interior to the Regency Park development. This was where the, the previous petition that Abby presented was, and then this is the parcel here.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Uh, yeah. Wayne, go ahead. She had a question and so was this going to be some type of car title loan place, not, not, not your typical new car sales?
No, at the public hearing, the petitioner indicated that it would be essentially, you know, function as a satellite office of an existing car dealership, accepting that any, you know, actual paperwork, documentation signing, things like that would happen at their main location. This site would be used to store cars and to show cars to the, to their customers and for them to test drive if needed.
Okay. I missed that meeting, that's why I'm asking.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Seeing none, we have a motion for denial. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it six zero and we'll move on to PC thirty dash twenty-one NVS Properties.
Good evening. Tonight we have PC thirty dash twenty-one NVS Properties LLC requesting an amended C eight on a one point seven three acre tract of land located in the southwest quadrant of Sulphur Spring Road and Arbor Spring Drive. So here you can see, looking at the county context map, our site is located in West St. Louis County. We have a close up aerial photo with the site outlined in red. This is a larger aerial view of the site. You can see some of the surrounding residential uses, the commercial development along Sulphur Spring Road and Big Bend Road, as well as some of the commercial uses on Sulphur Spring Road. So the preliminary site development plan presented at the public hearing showed one entrance off of Sulphur Spring Road and another entrance off of Arbor Spring Drive. It featured a stormwater detention basin that was one hundred and ninety-two feet long with twenty-one parking spaces and one accessible parking space with a ten thousand seven hundred and thirty-one square foot building and fifteen thousand square feet of outdoor play area. The architectural elevations presented on the east elevation, it shows five sets of double wide windows. And then we also have two sets of double wide windows at the north elevation. After the public hearing, the petitioner did submit an amended site plan. First, you'll notice at the Red Oval, they removed the curb cut on Sulphur Spring Road, leaving one entrance on Arbor Spring Drive. They have placed a monument sign at the northeast corner of the site. Additionally, they added two shade structures to the playground to provide shade as well as a visual buffer for the surrounding residences. Removing the curb cut on Sulphur Spring enlarged the stormwater detention to two hundred and seventeen feet in length. And this also increased the parking to twenty-five standard spaces and to accessible spaces. They also did some revisions to the east and north elevations. They added two triple wide windows on the east elevation and they provided a sample of the sign that would be on the building. At the north elevation, they also added a triple wide window and they also included what the sign would look like that would be placed at the corner of the site. Additionally, they provided us with pictures of the shade structures that they use at their schools and this would be in the playground area. And then these are the samples of the decorative fencing that would be used. The playground fencing would be white and the other fencing throughout the site would be the black fencing that you see. So the department is recommending approval. This site has been zoned C eight since nineteen ninety-three and a childcare center provides a transition from the residential uses in the area to the more intense commercial uses at the intersection of Big Bend and Sulphur Spring. The C eight procedure allows for site specific conditions and ensures that the use is developed in a responsible manner. There are childcare facilities around the subject site and some specific conditions of development would be increased landscaping and buffer yards at the west and south property lines. Architectural review to ensure compatibility with the surrounding residential uses as well as a requirement for foot handle levels to be zero at ten feet east of the western property line. And at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion.
Okay, recommendation is approval. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
My second.
Wait, second?
Bill, I'll make a second.
Discussion, anyone?
What, wasn't there some discussion about the traffic? About closing down the curb cut on Sulphur Springs and routing everything over to Arbor?
Well, the site, since nineteen ninety-three, the county felt that this site was appropriate for a childcare facility, but with the width of Sulphur Spring, it should be able to handle the traffic. The way drop off and pickup is staggered, it shouldn't actually cause that much traffic onto Arbor Spring. Drop off is from six AM to ten AM. And it kind of, you know, trickles in. It's not like a regular school where everyone needs to be there at eight thirty in the morning.
Yeah, but I think that area is built up quite a bit since nineteen ninety-three. When they zoned it for childcare, I don't think that if you went back to nineteen ninety-three and then went to it now, there's a big difference.
I think that from the historic aerials, they show that there's a, and even in the, even in the mid nineties, that that, that that general vicinity did have a very strong commercial component there at Sulphur Spring and Big Bend. And those residential, those residential properties were in existence in nineteen ninety, in the, in the mid nineteen nineties. So I just want to echo Emily's analysis here in that that they reacted to the county Department of Transportation's request to close off one of those, to close off that access onto Sulphur Spring. That was a request and would have been a requirement by county DOT. And as a, as a use, a childcare facility is a lower intensity type of use. It doesn't have consistent and constant traffic coming into it as though this were a, a general retail center or something of that nature. And that's why the department finds and feels that a childcare facility would not necessarily, would not exacerbate a traffic concern, especially for a major arterial that is designed to, to, to accept commercial traffic such as Sulphur Spring.
If I remember right, that's four lanes right there.
Now Sulphur Springs wasn't the issue. What I was saying was Arbor was the issue. It wasn't Sulphur Springs. It was the traffic on Arbor that, that I was questioning, not the traffic on Sulphur Springs.
Of course.
Could, could we go back to the, are you finished, Dave?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Could we go back to the general slide that has all the streets around it and all that kind of stuff? Okay.
Yeah.
Forgive me, but I don't see a north on here or south, so I'll just say the area that abuts up to the residential area is, will there be site proof fencing along there?
So the fencing has to be per health department standards for the children, but we are recommending a pretty substantial landscape buffer. We're asking for five trees every linear feet instead of the zoning ordinance two feet, two trees.
But the fact of the matter is it's C eight and we generally have a site proof fencing to somewhat shield that from the residents. Why would we not have that here?
Oh, I think it is perfectly up to the, if the commission finds that it, that it desires to have a requirement for site proof fencing along that western property line. I think that's up to the, the commission's discretion. The department found that adding a decorative fencing was, was, we absolutely felt that decorative fencing was necessary. You know, we, we found that the addition of five trees and two shrubs for every twenty linear feet, especially if you, their landscape architect put that in sort of a double, a double staggered row could achieve a similar sort of visual buffering. But it's definitely if the commission requests or the commission finds that it wants a site proof fencing added to that western property line, we can definitely put that in as a condition.
Well, the plan, the plan allows for some natural buffering and I would not suggest eliminating that. But I think I think we ought to treat this like any other project that I can remember is that we require site proof fencing and that could be added in addition to the trees. Since they're already on the plan and it softens the area for the, for, for the school.
If I could just add, and if Paul, you would take it back to the site plan, that there's a retaining wall proposed along the western property line. You can kind of see the L shape of it around the, the playground and I think it maxes out at twelve feet high, so the playground and the building will be up higher than the residences, so it would be possible to also, you know, you can see it's about thirty feet away, so there would be room for landscaping and fencing in that thirty foot area between the property line and the retaining wall, if that's what the commission would like.
I would propose it and we can see if the other members would think it's appropriate to do that.
Is that okay with the first and the second?
Yes.
Bill was Bill the second?
Yes, second is okay.
Okay. Okay, we'll add that in. Anyone else?
Yeah, Wayne, I've got a couple of questions. And I know I've read in there that we're, of course, have architecture review, but they were good enough to give us the the north and the east elevation, but there's no west elevation, which I think would be important since the people are down lower and they're going to be looking up at that building. I'm sure that was discussed at, at the meeting at the public hearing or not.
Yes, I do believe they actually did provide their, their architecture elevations show all this, all the facades. Emily just put the, just put on a couple of the facades into this presentation, but they, we, and I do believe one of the conditions states that all sides have to be equally treated.
Okay. Very good. And, and the other question was was this, did this site come in front of us about eight years ago?
There was a, there were a couple between the nineteen ninety-three petition when this site was zoned to, rezoned to C eight, there were a couple requests that were denied by the commission. There was one where they requested a a vehicle service facility on this site. And then there was one, I believe, where they requested like a fruit stand of a fruit and vegetable sales facility. And then the north side immediately across Arbor Spring Drive, I think was a the most recent petition to allow this dry cleaning facility on the north side. So there has been, you know, other recent action here, recent.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Seeing none, we have a motion for approval with the added items. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it six zero. And next we'll go to correspondence.
Before you have PC ten dash twenty-one Telegraph and Tansburger LLC. As you recall, this was a request for a change in zoning from C two to C eight plant commercial district for a zero point five one acre tract located at the southeast quadrant of Telegraph Road and Tansburger Drive. And you can see from the county context map, this parcel is located in South County and on the aerial, you can see the, the parcel outlined in red. And then this aerial just provides a clear view of the residential development along Tansburger and then the site fronting Telegraph Road. This was the original preliminary site development plan that was presented to the commission and approved. Subsequent to this, the, the petitioner has submitted a revised site development plan. And the impetus for the revision was to increase the number of vehicles that could stack in the drive-through lane on the site. Increasing it from eleven for the previous plan to twenty on, on this revised plan. And the idea would be that this would limit the potential for overflow from drive-through stacking onto Telegraph Road. And so the, the revisions or changes to the, the ordinance that are requested are pertaining to the structure setbacks and the parking setbacks as, as you can see on the slide. Additionally, this area that is sort of hatched here, kind of, you know, encircled with this, this red box and is proposed to, you know, to indicate to cars that are stacking in the drive-through line to not idle over this area to allow for vehicles that either don't want to, you know, get in the line or need to leave for, for whatever reason, to serve sort of as an exit lane. They can proceed through the, the drive-through area and exit onto Tansburger as needed.
Okay.
So I request a motion for approval at this time.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion for approval.
We have a second?
Second emotion.
Discussion?
Question? Yeah. In, in the rear of the property on the east side, it's a, I'm pretty sure they're going to have to put a pretty good sized retaining wall on there. Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
And then how big is that fence there? And then what time do they open in the morning?
And so the, the only changes, I mean, I, I don't have that information on hand. The only changes to the previously approved plan and conditions of development are the setbacks for the structure and the parking. So whatever the commission previously approved for hours of operation for the size that we're retaining while size of fencing will remain the same.
So I pulled, I pulled it up. We had said five thirty AM to nine PM and that staff could be there forty-five minutes before and after closing.
Thank you, Mel.
And then I think the, I think the wall gets to be it, I think it could be ten feet at its highest point, but I can pull that up as well.
And, and how high is the fence?
I think, I think it's a five foot fence atop the wall.
And that fence would be on top of the wall?
Yes, right, right inside the high side of the wall.
Okay. What, uh, has this reduced the amount of parking at all? And the reason I ask that is you do have staffing and there will be people parking there to go to the walk-up window, I assume still. And it, it, it just looks like it's it's created a, a real hassle to get out on the Tansbury if you're not in line.
Well, I, my understanding is the exit onto Tansburger is not going to be utilized that frequently. It's, it's more of a sort of a slip lane, exit lane that you might see in a more traditional drive-through. There is room to turn around and exit back onto Telegraph. And this is the, the previously approved plan showing nine spaces along the eastern property line and then five along the southern. This plan has eight in lieu of the nine and then five. So there's one less space on this, you know, parking space on the, the proposed revised plan.
Okay, but Ed, I think the fact that they need to have more curing area is very important because if you drill, look at some of the other installations they've had in the city and I'm sure you have, it blocks traffic terribly at a couple of them.
Right, so the idea of the
before, and this seems to have addressed that, which is good. On the other hand, I'm still not quite sure how people, if they're in line to go through, I'm not sure how that keeps that that access to the Tansbury open. I mean.
So this, this area that's hatched here, that's, that's enclosed in red, is going to be striped to indicate that you, you're not supposed to idle while you're, you're in the drive-through. So that would allow for a vehicle from the parking lot to exit onto Tans, onto Tansburger. Because that, that space is to remain open.
This really is a walk-up. There, there's no
Right, you, you can, there's no, you can't go inside and, and order anything. All orders have to be done either through the drive-through or, you know, online in advance. You can walk up to a window and in sort of the southeast corner of the, the building to pick up your order and And in sort of the southeast corner of the the building to pick up your order and then get back in your vehicle and leave. But there is no going into the building and ordering and 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 the such.
Okay, anyone else?
Okay. Positives and I see maybe a negative to it, you know. But I do think it's better to get them off of Telegraph.
And I think this is what it's trying to do.
Right, right. I agree.
Okay. So we have a motion. All those in favor?
I.
Motion for approval. Bill State.
We had a motion, didn't we?
Yes, we did.
Oh, okay.
Okay, let's do that again. All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Eyes have it six zero. And then we've got communication. From the Department of Planning. First tee range.
Yes, before you have PC fourteen dash twenty one First Tee Range Incorporated. As you recall, this is a request for a change in zoning from FPNU and NU to CA and FPC eight. For a twelve point eight acre tract located on the east side of Lee May Ferry Road, approximately eleven hundred feet south of Baumgartner Road. From the the county context map in the aerial, you can see that this site is in far south county. Just north of the Merrimack River and the the county line. Now, this was the preliminary site development plan as presented to the commission and approved. The the changes that are being requested, there was a an error. In the file that was sent to the county councillor's office, which resulted in the wrong conditions of development being written into the C eight ordinance. So the the requested changes reflect what was approved by the planning commission's letter of recommendation dated August sixteenth, twenty twenty one. And so at this time, I'll ask for a recommendation of approval.
Okay, all those in, we need a motion?
I'll make a motion for approval.
We have a second?
I'll second, cutting you out.
Discussion, anyone? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Eyes have it six zero. Anything for the good?
We do have a a site plan.
Okay. Go ahead. PC twenty four dash nineteen Adworth Senior Living.
Yes, this is PC twenty four nineteen Adworth Senior Living R E L L C. It was a request for a C U P in the R seven for a two point eight three acre tract of land. On the northeast side of Adworth Drive, approximately eight hundred feet northwest of Burview Lane. As you recall, this site is in South County and there you can see it outlined in red on the aerial. The architectural elevations were required for approval by conditional use permit number nine seven four. The C U P required that twenty percent of the structure be clad in fenestration. And there you can see the south and east, and here are the north and west elevations.
Okay, we need a motion? Anyone?
I make a motion.
Gary, we have a second?
Second.
Discussion, anyone? Comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Eyes have it six zero. Anything for the good of the order?
So right now, there's a slide up about a meeting we'll have next week. We'll have first a committee of the whole meeting to hear about the. Spanish Lake Town Center Master Plan that was created. And then we'll follow that with an executive meeting to take a vote to forward that to the full county council. Otherwise, you can log off for the next half hour or so, and we will reconvene just before seven for one petition on public hearing tonight.
Okay, thank you. We need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn. Bill Baller.
Second emotion.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Eyes have a six zero and we'll see everyone back at seven.
Thank you.
All right.